...for qualification for job training, Cassandra. Our word of development is that we need on this.
Good evening, Mayor Council. The Department of Development gave funding for job training program to interfaith neighbors in faith-based initiative. The agreement with the city was for one year, July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013. In order for us to continue to provide funding, we have to request in our queue to be advertised. I've invited Paul Kennedy and Ms. Todd to come in to give you an overview of the program for the following year, for the past years or so.
Good evening, my name is Diana Todd. And, um, Cassandra asked me to come and give you a little information about myself and FBI agency. I am a retired city employee of two years of service. And when I'm retired, I promise that I'll be dead. And I developed FBI because when I was the planning board secretary, I found that during the redevelopment, a lot of redevelopment dollars came into the city, but it didn't stay. Our residents were unable to, or were not interested to receive the benefits of those dollars. And as I saw the second round of redevelopment come through, I found that the situation was the same. So when I retired in 2004, I developed my nonprofit FBI agency. And the core services that we provide to our community are job readiness, opportunities, employability, skills training, and things like that. So we are a recipient of the CBPG workforce development, employability service contract. And the first half of the, first half of the program, we enrolled, let me see, 20, 24 people came to our office for assistance. 20 of those residents registered for our adult program. That were 12 from the Phoenix Rising Program and 8 from the Adult Color Caffeine Program. And 22 of those were our WE and U program. That's another program that we worked with.
We and, WE and U?
The WE and U, yes.
What is, what is?
Those are the at-risk U that are in our city between the ages of 18 and 21. And they're associated with the judicial system, with gangs, they drop that, they drop that, things like that. And that is to turn them around and get them employed back in college or to finish their GEDs. And that's that program. And we just took that program and developed it for our adult population as well. 32 other people came into our doors on the first half of the contract for shelter information, food can trees, security deposit, and utility help. So we did 20 the first half and 26 the second now. And I gave them a report to the government and it states that we are able to give personal information that we are able to give out. That shows that they are residents of the city who has very part of streaming rights and how far they came or what they did in the agency as we helped them to obtain jobs and get more of those skills.
Great. The start date would be when? Start and end date?
The start and end date of this is July 31st.
July?
I mean, 2, or 2/30. And it starts July 1st.
Might want to change the address here too, so you can look on the last page. Yes, Bangs Avenue.
Okay. That's, that was when we signed the first agreement, we were all on Bangs Avenue. And then we moved over to 1201 Springwood Avenue.
Well, I'd like to speak to the training, the use of these community block development grant funds to subsidize our Coola Cafe training program. So my report will focus on that.
Okay.
So first, I'd like to thank the Council of City and Cassandra for awarding us funding and a community block development grant monies from last cycle. As Diana mentioned, we also shared in that award $25,000, which we used to subsidize the Coola Cafe training program. At the time of the award, which was December 2012, the Coola Cafe was an untried, unproven concept. And the concept that, that we developed there is to open a community cafe with good food reasonably priced, but at heart, a training program for local residents for jobs in the hospitality industry. I'm pleased to share with you tonight this report, which we think constitutes some proof of concept and positive outcomes as a result of that funding that you have supplied and others have supplied for the Coola Cafe training program. First of all, I'll give you the numbers and then I'd like to share with you two stories. Cafe opened in April 2013. We have structured a three-phase training program for local participants working in the cafe. Phase one, which is the, is the phase that the FBI folks conducts, is off-site workforce development and job skills training with some introduction to the hospitality industry. That's a four-week program, a four-week program, and they spend that time working with the Diana and her staff. Phase two, they come into the cafe for a period of eight weeks. Once they come into the cafe, we pay them a minimum wage of $7.25 an hour, and they are working front-of-the-house jobs as waiters, waitresses, hosts and hostesses. We like them to understand what's going on in the kitchen, but this is not culinary training. This is training for jobs in the hospitality industry. So they work those front-of-the-house jobs in the cafe for a period of eight weeks. Phase three, once they complete those eight weeks, we arrange for an externship for them working in a local restaurant where they work for four weeks. We pay their salaries during those four weeks where they get an opportunity to demonstrate their newly acquired skills in the hopes of gaining full-time employment, either at that restaurant or somewhere within the hospitality industry here in Asbury Park. Since April 2013, we have had 17 local residents enter the program. 14 have completed their training. Of those 14, 13 are Asbury Park residents. One is a Neptune resident. The ages range from 18 to 27. Six of those 14 participants that completed training have been, have completed their externships and are now working in full-time positions at restaurants in Asbury Park. One of the participants actually has been hired by interfaith neighbors as an assistant chef at the Coola Cafe. And seven are current participants working in the Coola Cafe. That totals 14. I said that 17 entered the program. Three did not complete the program, and that's one of the stories I have to share with you in a moment. We have new classified anticipated to start the program in mid-October, and our goal was to train an additional 20 to 25 participants, local residents of Asbury Park, over the course of the next 12 months. Our hiring restaurants participating in the program are Fish Urban, Urban Dining, Langousa Lounge, the Dolphin Grill, and Libby's. We have other local restaurants who are aware of the program and are interested in considering our participants for externships and possible full-time employment. We have expanded the operation of Coola Cafe. We've introduced what we refer to as deep blue blues nights at the Coola Cafe. They're held every other Thursday. The next one is this Thursday night, September 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. We've brought live music back to Springwood Avenue, and we're averaging 60 to 70 guests each evening. The important part of this expansion of the Coola initiative is that it gives our training program participants a new experience in a fast-paced, noisy, crowded restaurant environment, when now homes of the tribe are, are making their magic from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. We've also changed our hours and our days of operation. We've expanded to breakfast service with new hours starting on September 3rd. We are now open from Tuesday through Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and we will continue to host in-house servicing of private parties during the evening hours. The overall cost participating in this, the overall cost to interfaith neighbors to run this program is approximately $200,000 a year. The average cost per participant in the training aspect of the program is approximately $4,900 a year. We pay their stipend during the first four weeks. We pay their salaries during the remaining 12 weeks. The community block development grant that we were favored with in the last cycle was $25,000. So clearly we have other sources of funding as well as revenue generated by cafe operations. I would like to share with you two stories of, of two big nets related to some of our participants. I said that three of our participants who entered the program were unable to complete the program, and this is really through no fault of their own. There are young adults from Asbury Park who began participation but left without completing. Two of the participants became homeless. One was not able to keep up with the program without permanent housing. The second entered a housing placement program in Newark through a relationship we have with the Covenant House, as no local sheltering program is available for use in Asbury Park. The third youth that left the program entered an educational child training program offered through Montclair University. All three of these youth left the program in good standing and would certainly be accepted back into the program if circumstances allowed. It's unfortunate, but many of our youth, particularly in this age group, 18 to 21, 22 years old, do struggle to find permanent and secure housing. Many of them are couch surfing, and in these instances, three, these three participants were no longer able to continue in the program. The next story is a much more upbeat one. And I'd like to share with you the story of Kevin Dawson. Kevin Dawson entered the training program as, I think, a 19-year-old youth from Asbury Park. And Kevin, absolutely, there's nothing we could do to get Kevin to smile and engage the public. Kevin completed the program. He also entered the Go to the Gold program, which is part of the community development initiative, most recently chaired by the former mayor and Tom Buecher, prosecutor's office. Kevin completed the Go to the Gold program. He performed his externship at Fish Urban Dining. He was offered a full-time position there as a food runner at the end of his externship. He then was promoted to the Raw Bar, and he has been selected most recently as a community stakeholder representing his community at the Community Leadership Training Institute sponsored by Neighbor Works America. Kevin, as well as the mayor, as well as Cassandra, and a group of other local residents representing Asbury Park, will be attending this four-day community leadership training conference in Sacramento, California in October of this year. So Kevin Dawson is clearly a star in our orbit, entering the program as someone who was almost non-verbal, unable to smile, and unwilling to engage the public to the point where he is representing the community at a very prestigious community leadership training institute on behalf of both interfaith neighbors, the Coola Cafe, and the city of Asbury Park.
Good job.
So that is my report on how we have used the funds, and, and we would hope that we would again be favored with some consideration for the next cycle of community block development grant funding.
Thank you. Mayor Council, you agree with your permission to advertise?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we'll actually move this to the regular session and we'll take a formal vote and then authorize the RFQ. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you did.
Defining our district redevelopment, city planner, Don Salmon. Thank you. Yes, we have a proposed project in the waterfront redevelopment area, and as this is your first review, and you're also redevelopment entity as a new council, go ahead, walk through the steps, development review, application steps in the waterfront. Waterfront redevelopment area has a three-step development review process. First step being review by the technical review committee. The review committee is essentially a design review body. They do an initial waterfront redevelopment plan, compliance review of a project. The technical review committee, after they review a project, very often will place design recommendations on the project and look forward it to you, acting in your role as redevelopment entity. And you are the second step in development application review process. The waterfront plan describes that you as a redevelopment entity, performing conceptual review, and truly to determine if the project itself is consistent with the principles contained in the waterfront plan. The final and third step in the development review process is at the planning board level. The planning board has a site plan and subdivision review and pool of powers. They also have the ability to grant any waivers, which may be required from existing waterfront redevelopment plans, provisions, and so on, zoning provisions. So the project for you this evening is at Philip Seabview Tower site. That site is in the waterfront redevelopment area. The owners of the property propose to construct a storage barn in a pole barn style. That's a term that I hadn't heard before, the kind of thing that is used. They all pray it was a storage shed or a storage barn. The structure itself would accommodate maintenance equipment for the existing Philip Seabview Tower. It would be located to the east of the tower between the actual Seabview Tower building and the vibe townhomes that are being built just to the east. It's relatively large at about 600, excuse me, 760 square feet in size and measures about 14 feet high to the peak of the roof. It would be located about 10 and a half feet from the eastern lot line, which is the lot line that abuts vibe townhouse development. The applicant, Philip Seabview, did appear before the TRC this year on two separate occasions, lastly on April 24th of this year. TRC approved the project, and they forwarded it to you as redevelopment entity. They had a number of comments and recommendations. One was that the comments of the engineer be addressed during the site planning review stage. Another was that lighting be shielded to prevent that light from spilling over into the vibe townhouse development. And another, that siding samples be provided to the planning board for review. The, and that would, that's a good segue into the next piece where you as redevelopment entity should be aware of the waterfront redevelopment plan considerations that come into play here. There are two, two waivers, at least two waivers which are required. I say at least two because during final review, this is the planning board level, and they discover additional compliance issues, although that's unlikely. The first waiver relates to why the board, why the review committee, technical review committee has siding samples. Proposed to clad this storage barn is vinyl siding. Vinyl siding is currently not a permitted material type in the waterfront redevelopment area. So in order to build barn with that material, a design date will waiver with your part from the design standards in the waterfront plan. The second waiver, in my opinion, is that a storage shed itself is not listed as a permitted accessory use in the waterfront redevelopment area in the plan. The TRC planner noted this in their review. I may note it here for you now, although it's not written in my report, and I'll be sure I can add it on the record. The, my comments, recommendations on this. The shed was testified to the technical review committee. This would accommodate maintenance equipment for Philip Seabview Towers. Philip Seabview Towers is slated as a building to be retained in the waterfront. Supposed to stay there. The concerns that I do have have been, that's addressed by the TRC as well, which are how can we shield this structure from public view at the street level and also in the adjacent development? So proposed are not only shielding for the lighting, but new landscaping, both on the east, north, and south sides of the building. So if you determine to grant conceptual approval of this, I do recommend a number of conditions. Those that the TRC stated, with following their engineer's recommendations, light shields to prevent light from spilling onto adjacent property, that the applicant provide detailed testimony as to landscaping they're proposing around the building, the siding samples, of course. I do have, we do have a draft resolution for you. That was in front of you this evening. If you're out there, grant conceptual approval of this. There is a representative from the applicants engineering firm here if you have any additional questions regarding details. But this is it. This is your first review as a new council for redevelopment entity. Also, Councilman Lefredo was on the TRC. He was present at those meetings.
Don?
Yeah.
I thought we had talked about when they had brought out the siding.
Mm-hmm.
Thought we were going to change it from vinyl. Wasn't that part of the discussion?
It was originally a metal clad building. It was a, it was a metal storage shed. The applicant came back during their second meeting before the TRC and changed it to vinyl. The committee then at that point recommended that the material samples be provided to the planning board. So if they, the material.
It was a, it was a.
Yeah. It was originally a metal building.
Right.
Metal, it'll have a manual.
So Don, Don and I were out today looking at it. So there's, with the vibe project, there's like two windows, six windows on one side. So in your opinion, how many windows would be affected by the building or the shed that now look out on to?
Well, it looked like there were, there were two units. I can't recall the number of windows. It would have been at least four and probably two window bays on, on the second floor of the units. There, there are certainly two units that butt up to this storage shed location. So their view, if you will, will, will change.
And then, and there was also already a shed on the property.
There is a small storage shed adjacent to the building on the east side of the building.
And is, did something happen that they now need more space?
I don't know. Can you answer that question? Right.
Well, they said it was convenient. They were taking all that stuff in and out of the basement. It was hard for them to get into, to access.
On the right of it?
Yeah. Apparently the machines are bigger now, the, the work comes in.
But they can, but current, they're, they are in the basement?
As far as I know.
Where, where is the engineer?
It's Jerry Frieda.
Is the equipment currently moving out? Please give your name.
Gerald Frieda.
One of the questions I have, and I think it may have already been answered, was all the equipment being housed in the basement?
I can't say exactly because I really wasn't part of how this whole thing developed. The site, I believe, was chosen because of the concrete pad that exists there now and the ease of access to where they're used to bring equipment in and out of the building. My understanding is that it will only be used in the daytime. There are no lights to put on the building. There are no garage door type of things to pull cars or trucks in and out. There are no lights added to the site. They plan to use the existing legs that are at the facility. If it were helpful to get those legs shielded, I don't believe that would be a problem at all. I see that as a benefit as well. And they're also planning a very heavy landscaping along the three sides of the building so that the vinyl siding or whatever siding is used really won't be seen from the streets or the neighboring property.
Don, the vibe right there, without the shed there, what's their view?
They look out onto this concrete patio. There are a few scrub trees.
And the brick building.
Beyond that, there's concrete patio. There is at least one picnic table out there now. There's a refuse area off to the side, separate area that adjacent to where the shed would be located.
So with the shed, there would be actually the landscaping, but they wrote, there's no view out of those windows to be viewed. It's like, it's not like we're building and they're blocking ocean views or anything like that.
Not blocking ocean views. I mean, certainly there'd be a building where there wasn't before.
Right.
It's taking up open space.
Right.
But the building is proposed for an existing concrete slab that exists. And I believe that's portion of why they chose to put a consent sure, because I wasn't involved with that decision.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Don, what I went to TRC. Is that question asked?
Which?
Is it just being built there because of the preexistence concrete slab and because it'd be built someplace else here? Were slabs, slabs are.
Well, no, it adds to the cost, yes. But that was, there's slabs there, and then money goes in. You know, we didn't have a problem, so it was shielded properly. But it's still got to go to the planning board.
And all of those issues.
No matter what we say, it's going to the planning.
Will be addressed at the planning board. Buffering lighting, things of that nature will be addressed in detail.
And also the vibe gets noticed if they have the adjustments that come through.
Very issue of also the, the shed not being listed as a permitted accessory use. The board has to tackle that as well.
They, they don't pay taxes or repayment of a little tax.
I'm pretty sure they're.
They're paying taxes now.
I don't know if they have high, like.
Oh, they had a high.
They had.
Those would be another rate.
Someone living in?
Since the structure is, my garage is, nobody's living in that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Essentially, the determination to be made by council this evening, and as Mr. Salmon indicated, he has prepared a resolution that he'll consider during the regular sessions, at this point, is this consistent with the goals and objectives of the waterfront redevelopment plan, such that you will then pass it through to the planning board for a full site plan and other approvals hearing so that they can address all of these issues of the buffering, the lighting, and everything in detail. And as Mr. Salmon indicated, the applicant will have to notice everyone within 200 feet. And basically, you'd be confirming that it is consistent with the waterfront redevelopment plan. Mr. Salmon has made recommendations in his memorandum in which he has indicated that in his opinion, it is.
All right. I know I've got no problem with going for the planning board, but my question is, is it absolutely, is it really absolutely necessary for them to have this building? I don't know.
When they already have a shed on the property.
And it's not just that. I mean, you know, they're obviously using the interior of the building. I mean, is it absolutely necessary for them to have this building?
No.
I mean, who checks that out? I, I don't.
It would be through testimony, the applicant. They would have to convince the board that they need, because they need those waivers as a bright application. They have to prove that they need this building, why they need it, that it's not going to be a detriment to the zone plan, the neighbors, the community at large. So, so from that standpoint, the governing body moving this to the planning board doesn't give the application approval. Approval, well, not approval, rights. It allows it to go before them, but it doesn't, it doesn't give the, gives you the right to do it. The planning board still has to make that determination. That's correct.
But I don't want to just go before the planning board with a design requirement. I want to go before the planning board with, is this a necessity for the building? And the rest of it is, they're going to do. You know, you know what they're like. But is this, is this a necessity? That's the question that needs to be answered. It's, I'm not the planning board right now, but that's the question I would ask.
It should.
Can you add those things when you leave the plan?
What should be reflected?
Well, we're in charge of the resolution.
But Don, she's saying that that condition should be reflected in the resolution that sent by the planning board. So it's a standard that would have to be met.
Well, let me add the other standard. Where else would a property could be put? How much is a cement slab? Cement slabs aren't that expensive.
Or vote no one, let them try it then? Or you're.
Well, let the.
It's sending it to planning.
So I have additions to the resolution of the, the applicant, applicant to present alternate locations to the planning board. present alternate locations to the planning board.
Well, was this, was this hotspot picked just because of the slab? Is there another spot that would be more confusing? And then showing he's ended up noticing, somebody just made a mistake. Why don't they put it over here? Would be better for us.
And the applicant provide justification as to the.
Necessity.
Necessity. Fred, would the council be able to throw down the resolution tonight and change the changes made during the work session?
Yes. With those changes, you would move the resolution forward this evening.
And that the TRC and here, nobody living within 200 feet was notified. As a planning board, they both be notified. You give it a time to.
TRC is just a advisory. There's no.
Yeah, they were, they're, everyone within 200 feet would be notified.
Don, who, who is on the TRC?
Councilman Lefredo. We have, there's the board engineer, board planners. Sarah Hentower from the planning board is on. There's a representative of DEP. That's a member. There's a representative of Vistar. That's a member. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Yes, the special event applications.
Tom, you'll. We have a couple of special events here. First one is the Memorial Castle Memorial Service. All these, all these applications were reviewed by the special events committee on Tuesday. This is an event we've done a couple of years right now. We're fine with that. It's just a small service now. Fee that we got from that was $50, the application fee. People bump in is another event that we've done. That's a square dance that happens on the boardwalk. I think this is again the third year at that event. And takes place October 6th, which is a Sunday from 8 a.m. to 12 p.m. Total fees for that event is $300, plus $50 application fee because of the amount of profit and $250 application fees at the boardwalk. The next application, Cycle for Life. This is just an event that actually goes through the city. They just notify us. It's a event that takes place in October of the year. This is probably the third or fourth year that they've done it. They just pay the application fee of $50. Do you have any questions? Just speaker?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, Cycle for Life, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m.?
Yeah, but they're not in the city that, that whole time. That's the time of the ride. So they just actually ride through Asbury Park and then they come back in the afternoon and ride through the city.
Do we have an approximate time that they'll be in the city?
Well, it's a standard start, so it isn't just a big pack of riders that come through once. We actually tried to discourage them, but that's the date, that's a national date that they use. That's the weekend of Zombie Walk.
I saw that.
But they did it last year in Independence Park, so.
Maybe some zombies will be riding with you?
Zombies are really good, so. Okay, and the last application is Meridian Gala. This is an event that is scheduled for the Grand Arcade Friday, September 20th. They have come back and asked to actually expand the event outside of the Grand Arcade. They're going to put a tent up on the boardwalk. And we'll have access outside of the Grand Arcade. Some kids have an application to expand their catering license for that event. The application fees on that, this event are $250 to use the boardwalk, $780 for Asbury Park Police, two fire inspectors for $882.50. They're going to have valley markings. We're going to block the street, Ocean Avenue. There'll be $250 charge for that and the boardwalk fee is $250. So the total fees for the extensions, $2,412.50.
How much, which street are they blocking?
Ocean Avenue.
The whole Ocean Avenue?
No, Ocean Avenue between Fifth and, and Sunset.
Fifth Avenue will be open?
That'll be open. Any questions? And that's it. The last application, the flash model, he was asked to throw on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another presentation made by our city engineer, Joe Cunha. For application to loan the open space for a grant for Springwood Park.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Tonight I bring for you a resolution to authorize the submission of the municipal open space grant for Monka County for the year 2013. This would be the third and final installation of the construction grant. We'd like to complete the process by submitting this resolution and you authorizing me to submit the application. In addition to this, as far as the public portion of the application, there will be a hearing held, a public hearing. It'll appear on the poster tomorrow. And it will be held on September 16th at 10 a.m. right here to discuss the Scoville project and any other community involvement or suggestions or basically just to discuss the project and the application.
Any questions?
Yes, let's see. Could you, could you explain for the public? We're looking at a total costing of $742,962.50. And we're looking at this match from the county as being $250,000. Just for clarification, could you go over how that, that money has been expended?
Yeah, I will briefly touch on where this $742 came from. Essentially in 2010, there was an application submitted near $2 million was the construction cost. At that time, and currently, this program usually only allows you one time to, well, one submission, one application, one grant for one project. This is a groundbreaking project in that we're now in the third phase of funding for construction in addition to a phase that was already funded for acquisitions. So county has put their support behind us. And essentially the $742 was the breakout of phase three. But being that we have to stick to the original construction estimate, that's, that's how that got here. So the other two were the $600s. Plus this came out to near $2 million. We will value engineer this at the time that we go to actual RSP and bid and design and all that and get it down to a reasonable cost so that the grants are covered. And then at that time, I will come for you for an actual funding plan because these are reimbursable grants. And there is a match. And at that time I will get into the full fiscal and financial for this project. But we are confident that we will be able to have more funding.
Okay, so to, to, for the mayor's point though, the, your, your, your cost estimate for this project now is about $1.2 million?
We're down to $1.2 million.
Okay, so just to put it in perspective, from when, when the original cost estimate was done to where you are now for about $1.2 million? This, this will be the third of the open space, of the $250,000 open space grants from the, from the county.
Correct.
And is this one, the third, the third of three dispersments from the county?
No, once, once this goes through and assuming they give us this final $250,000 grant, the city still have to fund them, award the contract, and by virtue of awarding a contract, you're saying that you have the money upfront. So I have to discuss with the CFO and the city manager as to how, what vehicle we will put in place for that. But reimbursement can be done at one time for the full $750,000.
Will the city have to pay out the new angry bond to complete the project?
Yes, one of the major, or one of the main non-reversable costs in this grant are soft costs. So anything for design, construction management, environment, certain environmental costs are covered, but certain aren't. Majority of those have been done already. So essentially we're looking at soft costs. Anything in construction and hard, hard cost is eligible. But like I said, there is a match of 25% by the city.
And that's, that's important for each of the grant awards from the county. The county requires a 25% match. So $250,000 grant requires a $62,500 match from the city. The funding source for that is our, the waterfront community initiative revenue. That's, that's what the city, that's what we've identified as the match. So the match is coming out of that, if you will, another, another grant funding developer, developer funding source. And there's enough money in that fund to pay for the matches of these three and actually complete the grant. We're now successful in getting additional money. We've also applied to foundations for additional revenue for this part. But that's the, you know, the lay of the land for that.
Okay, so we applied once, we got the $250,000.
Well, actually, we started, go back, go back to the acquisition. It was $86,000 given by the county for land acquisition.
Okay, then we applied for this grant, we got the $250,000. Where's that?
It's reimbursable, council.
So it's, the county's holding?
The county has, let's say, put this.
They didn't spend it all?
No.
Okay, so that's.
It's in their bank for us.
So one and two are guaranteed.
And, correct.
And we're applying for it.
Correct.
And the $62.5 for one and two are coming out of funds that are guaranteed because we have them someplace?
Yes.
And we don't know, is three there also?
Excuse me? Yes.
Three, five, the three's there also?
Correct.
Okay, then the county can't take it back?
No.
One and two?
One, one and two, and I'll call it, I'll call it 1A, if you will. The, the application money and the other two, $250s, they're guaranteed.
Okay, thank you. And we were, it's $743, it's not the total cost, it's one.
That's correct.
Right, so long as we cover the $250 plus the 25% match with this estimate, which is just an estimate, then we're good. Again, we had to back into the original numbers because they allowed us to go back and phase that since it was three phases running.
How long will the county have this guy? Till we start like doing something, I mean, the whole, right?
No, no.
We're waiting for four or five to pay the whole thing? I'm not, I'm not suggesting, but I mean.
Now, the county say, hey guys, we give this two years early. You have a gun. Well, the truth of the matter is, I mean, we.
We did playground.
We did a playground and.
We did, we paid for the.
Excuse me?
We did, we paid.
Yeah, we got to leave it up the ground.
Right, by the end of this year, we should have the $6,000 at hand. We just completed the final environmental rounds. There was very little contamination in the site of one oil tank. All oil tanks have been removed. And it's just a matter of closure report. It's not egregious enough to cause any further remediation. So.
The answer to this question is, how long will the county hold this money for us? And I think the answer to that is that this has been a very, very strong partnership. Joe alluded to that earlier in the conversation. The county has been very supportive of this. Now, they're not going to, and so, so our responsibility is to continue to move on, which we have been doing, doing the cleanup, doing the playground, phasing it like that, also going out and seeking other funds from foundations, et cetera, to offset the cost of this. So as long as, as long as we're moving along, the county, the county is our partner in this.
And officially, we request an extension through the summer of next year, late of July, for phases one and two. However, that will be amended once and if phase three is awarded early next year. So we can go for another year extension for all three and put this together and finally get it done as one project.
Now, this meeting on September 16th is again for what?
This is just to hear, it's formally, it happened with phase one and two. It's to invite the public to come in, share their opinions, hear about the project, myself and perhaps Don and Tony Uchio who was involved in the early stages. We sit here, we discuss the project briefly and then we welcome input from the public.
How's the public doing?
It'll be in the poster tomorrow morning.
Okay.
In a display ad, not in the back, right in the front. I think they got it.
So will we be able to, that will be able to get here at 10 in the morning?
I guess.
Okay, just wanted to clear that.
How do we move for the future?
Let me ask you just one more question though.
Sure.
When will the project be totally complete, anticipated?
Assuming this third phase is awarded and the law is in place and whatnot by the end of next year, late fall, as I reported at the last meeting as well, so. It'd be great if we could have all of this together by the beginning of next year and put it out in the spring and get it done by late fall. All weather permitting, of course, but.
Thank you.
Any others?
Thank you, Joe. Great proclamation procedures that. As part of your packages, there was a memorandum that Tony Uchio had prepared in the past. It dates back to 2010 with regard to the prior policy and procedures that the council had, the previous council had followed concerning proclamation requests. And we included this as part of your packages this evening so you could review it and decide if you wanted to continue with the same policies and procedures or if you wish to modify this in any respect.
If I may comment right now?
Absolutely.
One of my concerns is the public, we have a copy of this. I don't know how many people in the public know about this procedure. So how do we go about disseminating the information as to what this procedure is?
It's a public document. We could certainly, if we're able to, put it on.
It is, it is a concern though.
But this could be available at the city clerk's office if anyone wanted to pick up a copy. We could make, make it readily available to the public.
At this point, do we bring it up later on and vote on it? Because I assume everyone's ready? Because the question is.
It's a, it's a.
Do you want to vote?
Yeah, well, here's the thing. Again, there, there were certain processes that, that have been in place. And so as we go through different, different elements of this, you know, new members of the governing body, it's an opportunity to say, yeah, I think that's a great process. Let's keep it the way it is or amend it in some way or whatever. I don't think it was ever adopted by a resolution or anything like that. It was something that was presented to the governing body so that there was agreement on how, on how proclamations would be put in effect. There have been times when dozens of organizations, a lot were proclamation, done for this, a lot of proclamation. And so, so there was a, there was a need at some point, we felt, to have some kind of standard, like what fits into a category of proclamation, what fits into a category of letter of accommodation, you know, that type of thing.
And so have there been situations where we have been inundated with people that want this that have not followed the procedure? And that's the reason why I asked that question. Are we all in agreement to follow this procedure?
Yeah, we've always followed, yeah.
We've always followed it? Okay.
Well, there was no procedure to begin with, like anything else. Had a law been in place. The procedure came into place because there was a need to, you know, have some guidelines. So as long as you're comfortable with the guidelines, we'll continue with that, you know, from the administrative side, we'll continue with that procedure in terms of leaving proclamations to the governing body. If you want to change it in some way, that's your call. And if any member of the public is interested in getting a copy of the proclamation procedure guidelines, they'll be available at the city clerk's office. So with that, matters to be introduced by city council is next on the agenda.
Besides school and cafe Thursday, nothing. Thank you.
First of all, and I'm sure Jackie's going to come up and talk a little bit more about this. The chamber is hosting the Oyster Fest this weekend. It's being held at the Cariselle parking lot. I was just guaranteed to be one of the biggest events or one of the, bringing a lot of people into the town. It's Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And I intend, even though I don't eat oysters, there's a lot of stuff there for all kinds. a lot of stuff there for all kinds of people, so it's a great event, and I encourage you to go. Also, Councilwoman Quinn and I will be running the forum tomorrow night for the website, 7:00 in the council chamber right here. I encourage anyone to come. I'm very, very happy to see AP TV in the back filming this, glad to see you, even though your project was cut, glad to see you. Also, I started school yesterday and today, oh, it was so hard, but we didn't have kids yet, we just had training. But while I was there, I had a freshman orientation day today with a lot, about 300 freshmen running around, going through their schedule, all excited about school, and it made me really think of something that Councilman Sanders and I always said, that education is the key. It is the key, and it's definitely the key in this town. When are we going to stop pointing fingers at everybody else? When are we gonna blame, stop blaming the police? I mean, I read about a shooting in Neptune, and damn, the article didn't, excuse my French, didn't say at the end, it's right down the street from Asbury Park. So no matter what we do, we're named. And so as a community, we really need, we need to take this on. We need to take this on and stop pointing fingers at the parents and, and how they're not controlling their kids, and, and at the police who are not doing their job. We have some very good police in this town. I would love to have more money to do community policing, but as Mayor Johnson used to say, we cannot police ourselves out of this. So I think we need to really come together as a community, so that the press will finally put some positive things in there about things that we're doing, and that we can save more of our kids. We heard about job training, excellent programs that are there, but if we don't keep the kids in school, and I think we had one of the lowest graduating classes this year, which was very disappointing, we need to keep the kids in school, education is the key, getting these kids jobs, to getting them trained, to get them out of this situation, and give them hope for the future, because the kids here don't have hope. And the parents need our support, they may not know how to do this on their own. They need our help and our support, and we have parents that some of them don't even have high school diplomas. We need to get them an education, and we need to get them jobs. But I think as a community, we need to come together, and we need to come together, I know there's neighborhood watch groups are getting stronger and stronger now, we need not be afraid to report. Prosecutor's office is now offering rewards for this, money, that for people to come forward, and you don't have to give your name, but if we, we may be silent, whether it's leadership here on, on this council, or anywhere in the community, if religious leaders don't step up, this is gonna continue. And I would say the thing that really, I mean, besides the comments here, was when a young man was walking his baby in a stroller, and the baby was shot in the head because the guy pushing it was the target, and, you know, the kid got shot. So, I'm not, that's it.
Just real quick, Terry, once you get rid of trouble with the street sweeper, can we just put it on our radar that maybe we need a new one? And also, I'd like to know about the small one that we had. I just want to report on, I want to know whether that thing is, was it ever used? Was it not ever used? Because I never saw it before.
From what I understand, it was used, CD day, the three, I mean, especially in the sidewalks and hard-to-reach areas, a little larger. I resurrected it last year, when our sweeper was down, spent a period of time, only to find out that there was a major issue with it, where it was actually plung at their back out, and all the drivers ran down the street again. So after that, we decided to just stay vigilant with the current one, and put in a request to CFO for a new one.
Okay, so you're telling me the small one just isn't working and that's it?
It's, it's not even worth putting in the mind that it requires effects at this point, unfortunately.
And, okay, thank you. Just so you all know, on this date in 1863, the Cumberland Army crossed the Tennessee River. And what's significant about that? See, Jim Henry appears, nobody can tell you. There's only 20 points of award, but we can talk about that another time.
Thank you.
So just two quick things, there's two openings on the housing authority that we're looking for applications for, the applications are due by September 25th. There's an alternate on the zoning board that's also due by September 25th. And we have, not only are Sue and I doing the forum tomorrow night, we have an online survey, so people can start telling us what they want to see on the website. One of the big reasons this is a project for me is because communication and making sure that we're communicating with all the residents in this town in a multifaceted way, and the website being one of them. So there's a hard copy of a survey over there, and there's a survey online that if we don't have on the website, we'll put on the website. We already have on the website, we have it on Nextdoor, we have it on a number of social media sites. So as much information that we can get in terms of how to make the, the website accessible and easy for everyone to use, that, that's the information I'm looking forward to.
Just a few things. Number one, many of you know that we are, have asked for applicants for the new city manager position. We've had 117 applicants, and also for the CFO, 37 applications left. So that's just for your general information. Also, there has been some discussion regarding an ombudsman, and so we will be talking about that in, in the near future. If you have any suggestions, you may want to get up to the mic either tonight or next week. In addition to that, our chief of police is retiring. I'm not sure whether he's gonna be here until the end of September or the end of October. At any rate, there has been a little bit of discussion as to whether the city would benefit most by having, continuing with a chief of police or with a public safety director. So I'd like you to think about that, because we would like your comments. That's it for me. We'll take it at a five-minute mark.
I'm sorry. Okay, okay. The best matters to be introduced by city attorney?
Yes, thank you. Two things, first, I wanted to let the public know that the council will not be taking any action this evening on any item that was addressed earlier during our executive session. And secondly, I'd just like to report that we received some very good feedback from the public with regard to the formation of citizens committees, as you may recall, that's been a topic of discussion at the last couple of council meetings. And I included with the council packets for this meeting, a copy of one letter in particular that we received from a member of the public, in which some very good suggestions, in my opinion, were made, in order to put together some parameters in a master resolution that would apply to all of the ad hoc committees that you have established and may potentially establish in the future. So I would like to, with your permission, put a resolution together in which I put together some parameters for all of the committees that you'll set for in the future, with regard to their size, mission, a reporting requirement within a certain amount of time from the formation that they provide a report back to the council, and matters like that.
I love it.
I love it.
What are you doing there?
I was going to ask your permission to prepare that for your consideration at the next council.
Absolutely, yes.
I have no idea.
And you can see my draft and decide if you want to take things out of it or add things to it, or if, if I put in terms of a number, not to exceed X, and you want it to be larger or smaller, or to examine it on a case-by-case basis, when you have a draft in front of you, we can then discuss it perhaps during the work session or next council.
No, I love it, yeah.
That's it.
So items for the city manager, one, one item, on the, on the regular meeting agenda tonight, there, there was an item for ordinance to be introduced. There was some miscommunication back and forth today between myself and the city clerk, and it was originally thought we'd take it off, but we're gonna put it back on if the governing body is okay with that. And so this ordinance is for introduction, and it's a, it's an ordinance that would refinance existing bonds. And what, what that would do is save the city money. For example, if you're currently paying 5% interest on bonds that are out there, and you can get it, just like refinancing your home, and you can get it, pay 4% for those same bonds, or 3%, or whatever, it's an opportunity for the city to save money. The ordinance, this ordinance tonight would be on for introduction, it would be a public hearing at the next meeting, and we didn't answer any questions throughout that, but I just want to make sure that since it was on and off, again, and so it's just clerical miscommunication, but does the governing body wish to continue with that this evening?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay, so it's on. Thank you. And that's my...
Move it. Go adjourned for five minutes.
Taking the absentee seat.
As to compliance with the Children's Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 81, 1975, add it with notice that this meeting is modified in the following manner. Notice this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, poster Star Ledger on July 30, 2013, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices on file with the city clerk.
Here. Or here.
Here. We now have a proclamation that Deputy Mayor Henderson will deliver.
Thank you, Mayor Campbell. And whereas the childhood cancer rates have been increasing in the past few decades in approximately 11,630 children, in the United States, under the age of 15, will be diagnosed with cancer in 2013, and 2/3 of childhood cancer patients will develop chronic conditions resulting from treatment. And whereas one out of every five children diagnosed with cancer will not survive the disease, and pediatric cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in U.S. children under 15 years of age, and kills more children than AIDS, asthma, cystic fibrosis, diabetes, and muscular dystrophy combined. And whereas childhood cancer spares no socioeconomic, ethical, racial, geographical class, and whereas childhood cancer is not one disease but made up of various types and subtypes of cancer, and the cause of pediatric cancers are largely unknown and not linked to lifestyle, unlinked adult cancers. And whereas less than 5% of federal government's total funding for cancer research is dedicated to childhood cancer, and only about 3% of funds raised for the National Cancer Institute go to pediatric cancer research. And whereas childhood cancer research is vastly and consistently underfunded, and has decreased steadily since 2003, despite major advancements in treatment, it is still critically important to conduct research and increase awareness regarding pediatric cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and council, the city of Asbury Park, do hereby proclaim September 2013 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, within the city of Asbury Park, in order to help raise awareness of pediatric cancer and its victims. And it's go gold, you know, have we went pink? Well, this month we are going gold. What I'd like to do at this point is I'd like to ask Chris Lee, Bailey, and Tori, and Kelly Erle to come on up and receive this.
To declare this pediatric cancer month, a cancer awareness month, and again, go gold.
I just wanted to thank everybody for supporting this proclamation. I don't know if everybody's aware, but Monmouth County is the third highest county in the state of New Jersey for pediatric cancer incidents. Not only is there 11,200 under the age of 15 diagnosed, that number climbs over to 13,200 when you go up to 18 years of age. There are 12 different pediatric cancers. They receive 3,000, 3% of the national budget that's allocated to resources for children. That's less than, I, I don't even know, $1 to every 100 that, that is acquired for cancer research goes to our children. This is a picture of my daughter, she passed away in April. She was 10 years old. She suffered from two different types of cancer. She was diagnosed with non-hodgescent lymphoma first. The treatment for that cancer actually gave her a second cancer. That cancer is what killed her. She was treated at Monmouth Medical, her condition was so great that she had to be transferred to the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. Tori's attending now for her treatment, and when that case became too difficult, she was out to the St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. They secure private funding, all research funding, because there is not enough money allocated in this nation towards children's cancer. There's only been two drugs developed in the past 20 years that have been made for children. So what they do now is they take adult drugs and try and figure out how much somebody like Tori may need for her size and her body. And unfortunately, that's what killed my daughter, it wasn't the cancer that she felt to ultimately succumb to, it was the treatments over the past five and a half years. So I thank you for bringing awareness to this cause. We want everybody to know what gold means just as much as they know what pink means. And my mom's a breast cancer survivor, so I'm not saying pick or choose, I'm just saying be more aware of what children go through in this country, and in this state, and in this county alone.
We're from the same school, we have three children at the same time in our little, where I teach and I coach.
Twice there.
In one of our elementary schools in Ocean Township, we have three children at the same time, which is really a high incidence, so.
And thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to go over to the session one time, please.
Will you please come up to the mic over here, state your name and address, three minutes, please.
I'm Patrick Garvey, Neptune, Heaven Cedar West Drive. I'm a neighbor of the city of Asbury Park, 57 years. I got here from Minneapolis exactly 57 years ago today. I have a statement that I thought I would read, but in respect to my wanting to be considered for the city of, city manager's position, but I think rather than read it, I'll present it to the, to the legal man, and if he would circulate it to the members of the council for their later review, I would be sincerely appreciative. There's one here for every member, but I'm sorry, this, somehow I forgot to read, but there's not one here for you, but...
Thank you. Next.
I'm just shocked, I didn't see Rita or Jerry pull up here, I'm just stunned, what? There he comes.
Lord of Brown, Carter, Fifth Avenue, mayor, council, how do you do? Welcome back, Terry.
Thank you.
You have a good vacation.
Thank you.
I see some of the traffic lights are getting back into working work. I'd like to call your attention, however, to the one at Cookman and Heck. It is actually working, but it's not working for any particular reason. You sit there, and you sit there, and there's no cross traffic, it's just holding up vehicles going east and west on Cookman Avenue for no reason. I'm suggesting you change that back to a blinking light, which is what it was previously. Perhaps a yellow blinking on Cookman and a red blinking on Heck, Worth and South. There's not enough traffic there to warrant stopping vehicles and wasting gas. So perhaps we can accomplish that. And maybe review all the other intersections, now that the lights are getting back into functioning order, now that it's off-season, maybe we really don't need that hold-up traffic. We could make them four-way stops or some variation of that. The other thing I'd like to bring up is, I'm, I'm very concerned, as I always have been, about the treatment of the city's public assets. It's sometimes difficult to consider public space as a resource. Public space is a huge... Public space is a huge resource here in Asbury. The founding member of Asbury Park, Mr. Bradley, assured that there was an abundance of public space in Asbury Park. But I see year after year after year, it's being whittled away. Prior councils did not take very great interest in preserving public space and properly treating it. I want to raise your awareness about the value of preserving public space properly and treating it. There are now all public servants, some of you have been public servants, some of you knew of it. I know Mr. Mead understands my concerns. I've had discussions with him. I know Councilwoman Henderson understands my concerns. I've served with her on the dog committee, and I think she understands what I'm driving at. Councilwoman Quinn, I had the pleasure of giving a tour of Asbury Park, and I think she has now a better understanding of the concerns of preserving public space properly. I'm going to extend the offer to the remaining council members who haven't had the benefit of this enlightenment to take a tour with me around town, and I could show you some things you probably have not really thought of too much, and in doing so, making Asbury Park a better place in your decision-making process. So I hope you take advantage of that offer, all right? Do I have a commitment from Mr. Laredo? We'll check your schedule. Yeah, that's kind of open-ended. Mayor?
I have your phone numbers listed up.
And you? John?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, Nina Moreno, 8th Avenue. I was just wondering, Mr. Mead wasn't here at the best budget hearing. Could you do a little explanation of our taxes that go up 9%? When we got home, we were figuring it out. You can do it here. First of all, you get a budget that you can't read, and I did get a hard copy, and I was looking at it. The way I figured it out, it's going up 9%. Is that correct?
I'm not prepared to get into the detail of that tonight, Rita. I'd be happy to have that done for you though.
About the budget?
Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, the 9%. Is everything in that budget that needs to be this year?
Uh, no. Quite frankly, there's a lot of things in that that aren't in that budget that I'd like to see in that budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's going to happen when we have to pay for them?
Which we're not, that's the point. To answer the question, if I hear you correctly, is everything in that budget that I think should be in that budget?
Yeah.
No. You make choices every year about what you can afford to do within a certain budget, and then you go with that. I think there's, we all know, I think there's this need for additional police fire, et cetera. A lot of things that are needed in that budget that aren't in that budget. They're not there.
They're not there?
Yeah.
And what you said about the bonds being reissued again under a low rate?
Refinanced, yeah.
Is that all the bonds?
No, a certain issue.
Certain bonds?
Yes. The way that bonds work, when bonds are issued...
Yeah.
You know, there's callable, non-callable function of bonds, right? So the bonds that were issued are now reaching a point where they can be refinanced if the conditions are appropriate for that. The governing body we'll be voting on tonight is to introduce an ordinance that allows that process to take place if the market is appropriate and we can get the level of savings that we, first of all, the state requires that you have to save at least 3% on the refinancing, right? So they don't need to just refinance just because you can save a little penny here or there. So there's a standard, and if we can meet that standard and save that money for the city, we want to be in a position to pull the trigger, as was stated earlier today, and take advantage of that savings for the city.
Do you have an idea how much money that is? How many bonds?
I think that the total number of bonds, like $2.7 million, will park.
$2.7 million?
The savings would be, I'm going to be close, if everything went perfect and we could rebond and everything, and the city manager is absolutely right, we would like to rebond a bond, but we just can't because of state statutes and because MCIA isn't rebonding, we're part of that. We're looking at, you know, a minimum of a $10,000 a year saving through the year 2021, soon as we pull the trigger, soon as we get to that 3%. And that's after all expenses, that's after bond capital, that's after paying everybody.
And that's going to cost us something.
No, the savings, no, the savings.
That's after all, yes, you have to...
Net savings.
Net savings would be about $10,000 minimum a year through the year 2021.
Has the monitor been replaced? The state monitor? Thank you.
No.
Three minutes are up.
Yes, no.
Next, what?
No.
No, okay.
Denise Richardson, Ridge Avenue. First, I want to say congratulations to Mark on his retirement. I thank you so much for helping me, and I wish you well. The other thing is NYI. The Monmouth County Health Department is holding a food clinic in Asbury on September 6th at the Senior Center from 12:30 to 1:30 p.m. The cost is $25. Medicare and insurances are accepted if anyone is interested.
My name is Carol Gorman, 1701 Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park. I just, I was wondering if any of the council was aware of the counterinsurgency tactics that were used in Springfield, Massachusetts? And if so, what did they think of that? And also, there's been some movements, one of them was in Baltimore, where the citizens are using similar ways of going out in the street to help counteract the shootings and the things that are happening on the streets.
I'm not familiar with this second program, but I have read about, I've done a lot of research on this, and actually, I'm more familiar with the cease-fire program that Boston and Florida and a lot of the other high towns have used. So we're not just sitting by, but we are looking into, you know, a lot of programs that have already worked, and hopefully will have a meeting with local leaders, police, if they might have to try and say something like that.
And how is the information on the outcome of that disjoining? And how is the, you know, the outcomes, the results of your meetings, how do we learn that? Is there coverage in the paper?
Well, there hasn't been a meeting yet, but it's in the process of being...
But how really?
Well, there's a new committee being formed here called Crime, everything, which Public Safety, which you can fill an application. And you don't have to be a member of the committee to attend. I believe they're going to be open to the public, where you can sit in and listen to everything and then hopefully make comments at the end.
We're just starting to get some of the committees up in place. So for example, John Moore, I met with the prosecutor's office last week to talk about some innovative ideas that they had for Asbury and kind of analyze the funding, but I think the whole idea with this is set is not, is Maire and I would be co-chairs of the Public Safety Committee, where we'll start opening up the dialogue in terms of ways that other towns have kind of handled the problem. An interesting town that I've been reading about is from, who was emailed to me from a citizen sitting in the audience, that was what Memphis is doing. Memphis has an interesting program where they're doing a kind of all hands on deck approach, where they focus on a block and they measure, and when I say focus on a block, everybody focuses on the block. Citizens on Patrol, Neighborhood Watch, Police, Prosecutor's Office, and they start to measure the results, if that works. So I think that would be one of the things that certainly I would look that we'll discuss in the Public Safety Committee. But at this point, we're just accepting applications, and the next couple of weeks we'll stop the applications and kind of sit down, come up with goals, and I don't know if you were here, Fred talked about, a little bit about, he wants to kind of write up best practices for a committee, that I think we all kind of agree that that would be a great thing, whether it's a small committee, a large committee, open to the public, so on and so forth. Am I going on too long?
No. But you said we all kind of agree.
Okay, John, you can read the best practices, but I love the best practices, so.
Well, I just would encourage the members of the council to take a look at Springfield and what was going on there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Pappas, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. And of course, yes, I will take this opportunity to invite everyone here to this year's Service Fest. It will be taking place in Carousel Parking Lot, which we believe is where the downtown meets the waterfront, and everyone is invited on Friday evening. We consider it to be Asbury Park Open House Night. We would really like to see a sense of community, although it is an event that does attract a lot of visitors to our town, that we hope to engage and encourage to return back to our town. We'd really like Friday night to be all about our community, so if you're home and you can join us, there's wonderful music all evening long, there's live music and entertainment all weekend long. As a matter of fact, there is an entry fee on Saturday and Sunday, and a portion of those proceeds benefit the Boys and Girls Club here and all the wonderful programs. You can come out and meet some of the students that participate in those programs and hear firsthand what that means to them in this community. The other thing I wanted to make everyone aware of today...
If you want to, you can address the council, please.
I'm certainly sorry.
That's okay.
Well, tonight, mayor and council, it's all about the love. This is a rewards program that we're going to be launching here in Asbury Park. It will launch this weekend, and it is meant for visitors and also our residents to use here in Asbury Park. You are encouraged to pick this up at participating merchants. It has branding for Asbury Park, which is Love Asbury Park. We have seven to 10 merchants that will launch this program during this weekend, and we hope that that list will grow, and you will be honored with discounts for being a loyal customer of Asbury Park Businesses and using this card. It's very easy to use, it's like any other rewards points card, except ours is branded Asbury Park. The Chamber of Commerce is underwriting a lot of this, and we will in fact be issuing a lot of rewards for people using our business and merchants here in Asbury Park. We underwrote the cost of these branded cards, and we'll be doing all kinds of programs and promotions for attending community events and shopping and dining and staying here in Asbury Park. So love Asbury Park. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor and council.
I haven't been here in a while, but I'm...
Please state your name and address.
I'm sorry, that's in Part B, 1st Avenue. I'm going to start first with the special, some of these special events. In June, they had that guy in the street, and they put up this huge banner, you know, in the streetlights. And a few years back, they did it with something else, and we were out there, and the wind blew, and that huge light crashed down. You're not supposed to time the streetlights number one. So when they were putting it up, I said, please don't put that up, we had a problem here, somebody could get killed. They said, well, I agree with you, but I got to do my job. Next morning, I come down, and on 5th Avenue, it pulled the, I mean, the 500 block of Cookman Avenue, it pulled the whole traffic light down. And I don't know if anybody got sued, if cars got wrecked, but I mean, these programs, do you have certificate of insurance? I mean, is the city paying for all these things? Then I noticed, I mean, it's nice to have that market on Main Street. They're over there parking with big U-holes on that park, it's all dug up. I mean, the taxpayers and the residents, I mean, the businesses downtown, they have to pay, they get a ticket if they double park to try to unload their truck, and then other people come in, I don't want their pay for these, have these people there, and they're wrecking the whole park. I mean, do they get enough money to go back and regrass it, and the city workers to do all this? I don't know, I just, I mean, is it figured in the course? I mean, we always have all these lawsuits here. And I'm just saying, I don't want any more banners up there, because if they try to put one up in front of my store again, I'm going to take it somewhere else. And the next thing is, this new dispatching thing, I mean, I don't know what everybody else thinks of it, but if you call, I mean, what's your name, what's your first name, what's your address, what's your phone number? I mean, come on, you need to tell me, it doesn't come up on there, all this information? By the time you get done talking to these people, and then I had somebody else, I'm trying to cut the grass, this woman, I don't know, she was hiding behind a tree and all this stuff, finally, I put the blower on, get her away, and she goes running out, attacks this guy, hitting him, he's screaming, help me, help me. But I have a cell phone, I'm cool, get all this stuff, I tell him it's on the corner of First and Heck, where, what's the address? I go, it's on the corner by Library Park. Oh, well, that's not in our computer. And then another time I call, trying to get through to a street, and then she tells me, oh, you can't get a police officer for that. Where's, well, yeah, I just, I don't even call anymore. They said the phone calls are down. Well, what's the call? You don't get through, or they don't show up, really, when you call, they don't show up now. So I think, if we're having all this problem here, I don't think it's a good idea what's going on. And they have five policemen at night? And I've got something else to say, I'll do it next. Thank you.
Mayor, may I address one item that was brought up by Mr. Laredo? Yes, hold on. That has to do with the insurance requirements. Just so everyone is aware, the special events ordinance that the city has on its books requires that any applicant for a special events permit must post minimum insurance requirements. It's all specified as part of the special events application process and is required. So I would just indicate that the insurance part is covered with respect to every special events permit that's issued.
Can I ask you who paid for the last thing?
Excuse me, your three minutes are up.
Hello, City Council, Mayor. My name's Calvin Henderson, 405 First Avenue. I want to be quick and touch on some quick things. I always see a bulletin board put up to encourage some of the youth to come into law enforcement, that's why. The second, I have a problem with the sewer system in the new development, you know, you did new sewer, the water's starting to go up on the streets, so you got old clay connected to new sewer, that has to be addressed. And I'm also having a problem with the reassessment of the homes, you know, charging people with more taxes for old existing structures, and the taxes are already high enough. I can't work overtime to keep paying the city. Can you answer that question for me? Call the foreman, please.
Hold on, let me start with number two. Would you describe what you thought about the sewer, the clay, that, I'm not sure...
You have to, I noticed that, you know, you're not scoping off the sewers. You know, you got old clay sewers coming down old existing streets, and in the new development, you're tying into the old sewers. So I noticed when it rains, the water is coming up higher towards the porches, towards the homes, you know what I mean? So you don't have a good, a good catch area of the water going through the sewer system.
Okay.
For instance, if there was a storm like Storm Sandy, you know, it could be, you know, something bad happened, basements can start, you know, piling up with water. So I don't know who's in charge of the engineering part of that, you know what I mean, but we need to send cameras down there so that we can see we have full openings for the sewer systems.
Okay, so let me address that. If there's a specific, if there's a specific catch basin that you've identified that we think is an issue, then please let us know what the address is, and we will follow up on that. But the point is that almost every single piece of infrastructure in the city has been replaced. We don't have the old vitrified clay pipes in vast majority of the city anymore. However, what you're observing is accurate. The state changed the guidelines for the openings for the grates, et cetera, and it's designed to, so that the water can flow in, which, okay, they go floatables, going into the drain and then out into the lakes, et cetera. Well, the problem, however, is that the new design for how these storm system works, it doesn't allow as much water to go down as quickly. So you get, I know, I live on 4th Avenue, I get the same thing from the corner of my house right up. It goes out from like, maybe here to the first row, can't even walk out into the street. But then as soon as the rain subsides a little, it goes right down. So part of it is, how shall I say this? It's a design issue where the state has solved one problem, right? The guidelines from the DPD said that they've solved one problem by not getting as much of the debris, et cetera, into our waterways, but it created another problem with how fast the water can go down. But if there's a specific area, please let us know. Our city engineer, Director of Public Works, Joe Cully, is here this evening, so you can just like, call Public Works, give us the address, and we will go check it out, see if it's something that we can address. I don't remember the first question you asked.
We have a lot of young men...
Oh, oh, right.
That, that, and I'd like to see them enticed to law enforcement.
Okay, and I know that, I know the chief is here tonight. The city has a very progressive cadet program, school program, et cetera, but if you have any additional ideas on how to encourage young people to enter public service? I know the choir department has gone out, but do you have any other ideas on how to do that? We're all for that. That's something we completely agree with you on. What was the third item? All of the assessments, right?
The assessments, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, on that, I mean, it's a revaluation of the entire city. And typically, in situations like this, some people's homes... city, and typically in situations like this, some people's homes are under valued, some people's homes are over, when I say under valued, you know, if their assessment, uh, is, is higher than, uh, than market value, so, there, when the, when the rebound is done, typically, and this is, like science to it in this regard, but the average is, in, in most communities, you have a third of the homes that will, actually, the value of their homes will increase, and if the, if your assessed value is increasing, you're paying more taxes, um, third of the homes, the, the value of their homes will decrease, which means they'll be paying less taxes, and then a third of them stay about the same, um, there's a process, uh, when, and that's why we have, you know, we hired a company, uh, to go out inspect every single home, um, and truth of the matter is, some people don't like to let people into their home, but if, you actually get a, you actually get a, a, a fair assessment of your property if you inspect it, you can look at it, if they can't look at it, they assume, in, in what I would consider to be the worst, meaning, they assume that you've gotta finish basement, you've gotta finish this, you've got everything, instead of nines, um, but there's also an appeal process when, when the, when the rebound is done, so...
For existing structures, because they're, you know, they're charging for structures that have been there for 30 years, you know, so the new company, when they come in, they're looking at the patio, it's been there for 30 years, and they're charging you for...
Well, in some cases, what happens with situations like that is that, um, I know in my house, for example, there's a little tiny deck on the back of my house, I mean, really skinny, but it wasn't, it wasn't, um, it was, it was there when I put the house, but it wasn't on the records at City Hall, so when the inspectors came out, they, they put that down, a little, little rear deck, well, that's gonna add, add value to my house, so a lot of things get, get, um, documented that weren't, oh, that, that were either built without a permit, or somebody missed them in the last rebound, et cetera, so, it's, it's a, look, it's a, it's a legal process, uh, but all is said and done, what the process achieves, that everyone's property, that, that what you're paying on is the market value of your property, in some cases, it's, it's helpful to you, which has taxes, in some cases, it's...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Council, I'm the mayor, and everybody, um, I'd like to thank the council for now having cable TV, that, you know, you can have a good idea, I'd like to say thanks for getting, thinking out of the box and asking for a citizen to help out with the new website that you're working on, that was really a good idea, and I saw it on Facebook. I read a, a letter to the editor this week, was a woman was saying that she was sitting, her family was sitting on the green opposite of Stone Pony, and organized police moved the crowd off the lawn and off the dirt space, the last I heard, that ground space is really called Green Acres, and the city leases it for $10 a year, so I'm not sure who owns it really, but I don't think our city police force should be telling people to get off lawns that we own, and if this letter's correct, someone should be talking about this letter that the lady sent to the press, and she stated that Asbury Park is doing well, but we can do better, and that's what we've all been saying, everybody wants us to be better, and we're not here to complain, we're all for here to digest it, to make the system work better, okay, now, um, I noticed this morning, when I was over on Boardman Avenue, a lot of people that garbage on the sidewalk had orange stickers, I guess we have to compliment somebody for doing their job, that's what we've been asking, we're a resort town, garbage shouldn't be on the sidewalk on the weekend, then the other thing is, I wanted to come up with another new suggestion, they have lights on for the porch, and we have a lot of houses around town, as you know from campaigning, that don't have house numbers, but on how late at night you were walking around, a lot of houses don't even have porch lights on, and I would like a new ordinance introduced, from now on, if you're gonna have a multifamily, that if you don't have a sensor on your light to go on at nighttime, you need it, because when I lived on Sewell Avenue, all the lights would come on when people walked around the porch, and I think it's something that we should look into, I have a new, um, light, a merchant light, costs about $23 at Home Depot, and I think if you pass an ordinance, that could be inter, introduced soon, we could have it soon, um, the other thing is, well, I think what we were trying to say to you, Madam Mayor, and to the council, do any of you know anybody in this room who got a 9% increase in their salary? Do any of you know anybody in this room? Anybody in this room that a 9% increase in their salary? You guys should be up in arms at the taxes that do up 9%, and really finding a way to cut it, and I really like to hear the answer to Beth's question about the, the lawn, do we make enough money to repair the damage that those trucks do on the, on the greens? Did you ever floor it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at yours, I was nothing, I...
I have no idea what damage is done, I haven't got a report that there's been any damage done, so...
Okay, thank you, so she made notes or nothing?
Thank you.
Jared, what street did you say that people got taken in for their garbage?
Ford.
What? What street, I'm just curious, I didn't hear you. What street, what street was it taken in for the garbage?
Oh, oh, I know, I would have found Boardman Avenue, they're all over the city, I thought it was a good idea, someone's doing their job. Who paid for that light that's not covered by the power? Good question, who paid for the light that is not counted by the power?
As far as I know, JCP now put it back up, we have been...
They said, you said that, that isn't JCP now, so we're, it's our light, so we had to pay for it.
No, no, it's not true.
Okay, I can see...
I mean, now it's not...
I thought you had... It's a good question, I don't know, maybe it's something we should look at, let people ask questions, and then we close it, so no more questions can be asked, and council asks questions, and just to get, that was a good question?
Your meeting?
Yeah.
I was actually gonna speak to Beth after, as well as Cal, because they're writing the same blog, I have what answer from both of them.
Okay, but, okay, but I'm curious also, because I'm a taxpayer also, since I'm already in the room, the light came down, I wanna make sure I didn't make work, because you're right, they got liability insurance, but did somebody go after the liability insurance?
As far as I know, council, no, I can see a really good idea, I've been talking to Jim Markey for, uh, probably three weeks now, about that lane, various others from Oceanfront, and never once was it mentioned that we were gonna pay for that light.
Okay, actually...
Oh, it didn't go back up, did it?
Oh, governor's...
Excuse me?
Thank you. I have a question on the, in a minute, the vote for the adoption of the budget, I put down Deputy Mayor Campbell, Deputy Secretary of Defense, my favorite budget.
Say that again.
On the vote for the adoption of charges, Deputy DA, I'm gonna, uh, the adoption of the budget of the DA's, I accidentally put down Deputy Mayor Campbell, to be Deputy Mayor, and the vote is yes, if you voted yes.
Okay.
So with that approval, what do you manage to say?
Move it.
Selective. Councilmember Fredo, Moore? Yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Payroll resolution for period of August 16th to 31st, Social Security and Medicare is only $910,201.44.
Move it.
Selective. Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Uh, bill resolution is only $547,073.26. Move it. Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
Uh, isn't there, this is the one that I canceled for the Associated Community Society?
Yes, on everything and...
Yes, on everything except for the Associated Community Society, and the only reason is because it has been on their boards, so it shouldn't be voting on there.
So you were standing on that?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
The, uh, work compensation, the first one is $48,008.26, the second one is $98,476, and the last one is $119,520.77.
Move it.
Hang on, move it. Second.
Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Under the applications, the personal versus transfer, uh, from properties in Asbury Park, this time back, liquor license LLC, corner second managing member, approved by the police department and official department, beverage patrol.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And extension of the liquor license, it's mentioned all, it's being used in conjunction with that special event of the Marine Doctors Gala, approved by the police department.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And the special events is outlined by Tom Hill.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, and you announced about the housing story openings and zoning, number two?
And there's hard copies for applications for the housing and zoning over there.
Resolution authorizing for RFQs for the, as outlined by Cassandra, the work section, oh, it's in the air, I was just thinking, the work section.
Move it.
Second. Councilmembers Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution with respect to the pole barn of the mayor's council, city has required acting as redevelopment entity, granting conceptual approval regarding the proposed construction of a storage structure at the built, shooting tower block 39 on 3 Lot 4 referring, the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals, with the amendments that concern that board?
Yes, um, those meaning the applicants provide justification as to the necessity for the shed, the applicant to provide justification as to the necessity for that particular location, and to identify any alternate locations on the site where the pole barn could be located, um, and for the applicant to identify the necessity for the short storage shed, especially given that a storage shed is not listed as a permitted accessory use, uh, structure or use in the waterfront redevelopment plan, those will be added to the resolution.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
No.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And a resolution that's outlined by the city engineer regarding the municipal open space grant, Springfield Avenue Park Base 4.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And for introduction, uh, the public hearing will be the first meeting in October, which is, uh, October 2nd, is refunding bond ordinance, the city has required county attorney providing for the refunding of all, or a portion of the outstanding callable general obligation bonds of the city dated April 1st, 2004, consisting of $2,749,000 general improvement bonds and $500,000 short utility bonds, appropriating $2.1 million therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,000,000 refunding bonds of the city that require for financing because they're, uh... Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Quinn?
No.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
No.
Okay, any final orders of the public area to be held, wanting for handicap parks in spite of 3rd Avenue?
Move it.
Second.
And a Democrat public mayor.
All right. All favor?
Yes.
I don't know why we are in the ordinance?
What is it?
Handicap, handicap parking space, 3rd Avenue.
Motion approved?
Second.
All favor? Rules approved?
Second.
Councilmember Fredo?
Yes.
Moore? Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, you're ready?
Move it.
Second, all favor?